This conference will now be recorded.
Um, for September 22nd, 2022 will now come to order. And we'll start off with our invocation and Pastor Jeremy Louts Locks is here to do that. Thank you. That's why I call you Pastor Jeremy.
My apologies. I should know how to do that. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord Jesus, for bringing us here today for the matters at hand. God, we are just thankful that we can have this opportunity to do these things, Father, in such a wonderful place that you have given us here in Rome. Lord, we thank you for Rome. We truly do thank you for this wonderful city that you have blessed us with. We thank you for the people that make up this city. We thank you, Lord, for those who serve this city in so many different capacities. And God, we just pray for their protection, for peace over them, Lord, whether they are police officers or firefighters on or off duty. God, we just ask for your hedge of protection over each and every one of us, Lord Jesus. God, we thank you for those who serve in capacities such as this here today as our mayor and city council, God, that you will just be with them today as they look at the matters at hand, the agenda that they have prepared, as they look at the business matters that they are going to be deciding upon. God, we pray that you will give them wisdom, you'll give them guidance, you'll give them direction so that they can make decisions that are for the betterment of the city, for the long-term betterment of the city, and for a better tomorrow, Lord Jesus. God, help us here today. Be with us here today. Use us in a phenomenal way to look for that better tomorrow. God, we know that this wonderful city council and this mayor have taken responsibility upon themselves and to lead this town. And so, God, we just ask that you help them in everything they say, everything they do, God, let it bring glory and honor to you. In your name. Amen.
Very good. Thank you, Pastor Jeremy. Okay, we'll go on to public comments. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any comments made to the council at this time concerning an item not on the agenda. However, a council member or mayor may make a statement of fact regarding the item, make a statement concerning the policy regarding the item, and/or may propose that the item be placed on a future agenda or direct the city administrator to contact the individual to address. If you are attending the meeting via live streaming and you would like to make a public comment, you must email the city secretary at citiesecretary@cityofrome.com prior to 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting and must identify each subject you plan to present to be recognized. If the writer of a public comment is unable to read their own comment, it should be given to a friend, family member, or associate that is able to attend in person and read the statement in their stead. Public comments made in person require the speaker to submit the sign-up form to the city secretary prior to the meeting, and the form must identify each subject the speaker plans to present. A statement of no more than three minutes may be made. There will be no yielding of time to another person. Comments should be directed to the entire council, not individual members. Engaging in verbal attacks or comments intended to insult, abuse, malign, or slander any individuals shall be cause for termination of time privileges and removal from council chambers. Okay, Ms. Odom.
Yes, ma'am. Our first speaker is Joanne Wilson.
I want to let all you guys know, all the citizens, whether you live here or not, we'd like for y'all to come. We have on line, and I've left my note at home, we have the Fall Festival planned for coming up October 29th. And it will start at 10:00 and end at 5:00. You will find vendors, bounce houses, door prizes, maybe a costume contest if y'all would like to participate, and we'll split that along the way. So mark your calendar, please show up. And it's not a city event. It's by a group of concerned citizens, but it's to help get our city back together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson.
Next, we have Suzanne. Hi.
All right, works. So I am here on behalf of the city of Rome, and I'd like to share a couple of things. We, the undersigned citizens of Rome in the county of Wise, Texas, demand the immediate resignation of council member Mayor Protim Josh McCabe on the grounds of misuse of authority, neglect of fiduciary duty, Texas Open Meeting Act violations, incompetence, and gross mismanagement of $1.2 million of public funds by his own public omission on August 25th, 2022. We, I would like to present this petition, which is 176 signatures, to the Rome city administrator and city council, and there's that. Do you need that?
Okay, the next public comment we have is Lisa Wilson to be read by Joanne Wilson.
My name is Joanne Wilson. I'm reading from my daughter Lisa Ann Wilson, 240 West First, Rome, Texas. Lisa, my name is Lisa, as in play like it's me, a lifetime resident of Rome. As most of my close friends know, I am legally blind. I was shocked at the last council meeting to be notified publicly during the meeting and not discreetly that my public input letter would no longer be read by the city secretary. I was in belief, disbelief, that the city secretary would no longer read my letter. I felt this was aimed at me because of my disability, plus the fact that in my opinion, I was not only being discriminated against because of my vision, I felt it was also an effort to silence me because of my strong opinions and words that differ from the opinions of many of the council. The American Disability Act was founded in 1996 to protect people with disabilities. As you know, disabilities take many forms. For me, it is vision, as I have inherited an eye disease which is progressive and will lead to permanent blindness and for which there is no cure. I am legally blind, diagnosed at age 15. Do not pity me, and please do not discriminate against me either. In my opinion, that action was done in an effort to censor my opinion. My voice is loud and is often different from some of the governing body. The ADA was established to help me and others with disabilities. I ask why this action was not considered to cut me off. Simply my vision and other health issues prevent me, pardon me, prevent me from attending and reading my letter myself. I nor do others need to justify why they cannot attend meetings. You know, there are issues and concerns that you should listen to and not become defensive. Well, can three minutes not be allowed for someone to read my letter? What happened to my First Amendment rights? House Bill 2840, in addition to ADA offers protection? I'm asking that the city staff and governing body call 1-800-514-0301 and request information about the ADA so they can familiarize himself with how it works, who it protects, et cetera, so they can be more compassionate, kind, and sensitive. Am I through? Okay. At home, that was a three-minute letter. So we need to verify that, but for Lisa, she says thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. What else you got, Ms. Odom?
That is the end of the public comments.
Okay. Got a few announcements here. Okay. Voltrash trash pickup first Tuesday of every month. I believe the next one will be October the 4th. Quarterly household hazardous waste pickup, that'll be October 11th. City offices are closed, October 10th, 2022. And then also volunteers have gotten together, and we're going to have a walk cleanup down Main Street. Basically, just picking up trash with, we'll have garbage sacks and wear a bright colored shirt. And we'll pick up, we'll start about 10 o'clock at Dairy Queen, make our way down Main Street to B.C. Rome, across the street, and then back on the other side to clean up trash. It's a good way for volunteers to get together, give back to your community if you're so inclined. And I believe that's all I've got for announcements. I'm sorry. Thank you. October 1st. It's on a Saturday. Thank you.
I do have one announcement as well. I just want to remind everyone that our Rome Police Department is hosting National Night Out, October 4th, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, Rome Family Park. They will have bounce houses, free food, music, and a lot of emergency vehicles. Last year was probably the best turnout that we've seen in a long time. Our new police department, our chief, is doing a great job with that turnout. I know it's your sergeant that's putting on this year. So make sure you come out and bring the kids, and it'll be a good time for everybody.
Okay. Any other announcements? All right. We'll go on to the consent agenda. I believe we can do these together, A and B. Is that correct? Okay. A and B, it's the minutes dated August 25th, 2022. Also, the minutes dated September the 8th, 2022. Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Is that an aye for you? Okay, very good. Michelle Ty is on line. She's place four. No, I'm sorry, place two. I apologize. And keep Councilmember Kathy in your thoughts. She's recovering from back surgery, so she's not here tonight. All right, the next thing we've got are monthly staff reports and board minutes. That's item C. You want to start?
They're all in the packet. Do y'all have any questions about what was in the packet?
I do have a question about administration.
Yes, ma'am.
I was looking at the by the numbers, and I know that we've recently opened up an account, a consolidated fund account. I believe this is identified as business checking on this new one. So I'm going to presume that some of these where they went from building security 3 through 5, 335,000, went down to $8.09. I'm going to presume that that money went into that account?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, that's just one thing. In particular, I'm going to presume that that's what's gone on with these others. In particular, though, I was looking at the hotel motel tax of $87,000 that went down to 1727. With that being, you know, that's got specific use on that. It can't be just thrown into general fund and be spent. So I didn't know, shouldn't that be some sort of a line item or something all by itself?
Yes, ma'am. It is a separate fund, but it's all kept in the same bank account.
Okay. Now, did we do the same thing with water and sewage? Because I thought water and sewage had to stay by itself.
Yes, ma'am, we did the same thing.
Okay, because that's, that went from like, I don't know, 1.626 down to 218. But that is part of the consolidated fund. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
And it does, it's not, no longer required? I thought it had, I thought water and sewage had to stay by itself over here by water and sewage.
It's required to have its own fund, which we have done.
So what's the difference between that and the water sewage checking then?
So we pay monthly to have all these different bank accounts. If we put it all in one account and separate it in our software, it's still technically compliant with regulations. It's just less.
So is there going to come a time when we can do away with this water and sewage checking?
Yes, ma'am.
I see. Okay. That answers my questions. Okay. Anything else? Administration, building and development, fire rescue, municipal court, police, and public works? Any other? All right. Go to regular agenda, old business, discussion and any necessary action regarding facility. That would be Mrs. Priest.
Thank you, Mayor. So my question is, have we had any progress on the fire department matter?
I wish I had better news. Nothing has changed since the last time we spoke. We had two different companies come in and ask for bids for facilities, improvements, and repairs. One company, after speaking with them, they backed out and said they weren't interested. The other company that we did meet with on several occasions, I have left three messages this week that have not been returned.
So how did, what, how did you advertise?
That was done before I was in this position. This was set up before I got to this position, so I'm working with the companies that were already established.
Okay. So should, can we talk about some creative ways to try to get some bids and participation?
Yeah, if this final company, you know, I want to give them time because we did spend a certain amount of time meeting with them, going building to building to discuss the possibilities of upgrades. I would like to hopefully get them to come through with it before I start that process all over again because that was quite time consuming.
Is this something that we want to wait until after some of our interviews and decisions have been made? Or is this something that we can move forward on, do you think?
If this company comes through, I'd like to give them another week or two. I don't want to just start all over the process. But at that point, we may have a new city administrator at least make an offer, and at that point, they may be interested. Councilmember Ty wants to know if the other company said they, why they weren't interested. And no, they didn't say, and I didn't ask. They said they weren't interested, and that was the end of the conversation.
Does anybody else have any thoughts, questions?
I think just in my experience, it's going to be hard to find a company that's willing to do a small project of what we're looking for. Most of those companies are looking for bigger projects to make more money off of. But like Eric said, we got another company that's, I guess, putting together some numbers, and we'll wait and see what happens then. And if they don't come back with anything, then we'll push forward with advertising in more places or maybe the, you know, the, unfortunately, Eric is the interim. Or if we fill in with a full-time admin, they may have more avenues that they could look at for other bidders.
The gentleman did say he had been sick, and when I called him a week or so ago, he said he had been sick. Give him some time to compile the bid. But since that time, I've been unable to get him to answer the phone when I call.
Well, just would like to have things fixed, that's all.
Sure, I understand. You know, it's the employees that are working in these buildings. So if we can get them upgraded, we'd love to do that. But it's not something that can be just done overnight, and we are at the mercy of the contractors that we employ.
Okay, thank you.
As long as we're on facilities, I'd noticed over on the city hall on First Street, the roof is hooching up in the front, and so we probably need to take a look at that, too. It's done that before when we've had high winds and storms.
That was brought to my attention by Ms. Bee Craft, and I have asked all the works to take a look at that.
Very good. All right. All right. So we're done with that one? Okay. Regular agenda, new business, discussion, necessary action regarding city hall lease. That's the city administrator.
So this is a lease that we've, our lease is up for city hall. If we agree to a two-year lease, we save 10% from, well, we just keep it from going up 10%. If we sign just a one-year lease, the reason I put this on the agenda was to get your guys' guidance and counsel. If you want me to go ahead and sign a two-year lease, I didn't know if y'all had something in the works as far as another avenue. If not, then we're prepared to sign the two-year lease. It's in the budget. It was already passed, and we can just move on. So I guess staff recommends authorizing the interim city administrator to sign a two-year lease for city hall.
Discussion?
Well, at some point in the past, we talked about facilities, we made a priority list, and that priority list was the fire department, then the police department, and then public works, knowing that the place that we rent is the only building that is compliant and has handicap accessibility. And of course, we've been hoping and praying that we would get some grant opportunity for First Street, which hasn't happened either, and for, you know, an option for us. So with that priority in mind, I think that we have to stick with the lease.
So with, so we go with two-year lease? Motion?
I'll motion for two-year lease. I'll second that.
And all in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's go on to section F, or item F. Discussion, necessary action regarding grant approval for police department and active shooter response policy.
So I'd like to recognize Officer Sid Grant and Officer Admin Assistant Rachel Bernard for heading this up. They found a fully funded grant for ballistic shields in response to the incident that happened in Uvalde. So what they did was they've applied for this fully funded grant for three ballistic shields that would be provided to the police department. As part of that grant, we have to have a active shooter policy in place. Before I became interim city administrator, I was busy rewriting our general orders for the police department and redoing all of them, and this was one of them. But because it's not in place yet, what I'm asking is that if you'll, y'all have a copy of it, if you'll go ahead and approve that policy, it's the active shooter policy, and then approve the the resolution 2022-15, basically authorizing us to purchase these, and then we would be fully refunded for the, and this is if the grants approved. We've applied, and we need this done so we can be fully compliant with our application. It could be turned down, but if you guys will go ahead and approve these two things on one agenda motion, then we'll wait and see if we are approved and we are authorized to go ahead and make the purchase. And then, but it would be fully refunded. So we would put the money out at first, but then they would reimburse us dollar for dollar, so it wouldn't cost the city anything. So if you do see Officer Grant or Officer Bernard, thank them for their work on this.
Any discussion?
So if not approved for the grant, then this would, the purchase would not happen?
That's correct.
Okay. I think with everything going on in the world today, this makes absolute sense. So I would like to motion, does it need to be separate motions for this, or can we do it all under one? We can do it under one?
Yes.
Make a motion to first approve the active shooter response policy as well as authorize our chief of police to apply for the grant approval for the ballistic shields.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I was telling Ms. Odom before the meeting that the veterans had somebody come in with a, an active shooter class, and I think it was about an hour, an hour and a half. I mean, he had videos and everything. It had been approved through the Homeland Security. Didn't, it didn't cost anything.
Okay, so these are ballistic shields that we would use in response. But I would, I'm working with Aurora Baptist Church right now to put on civilian response to active shooter events. I am an instructor in that. I teach it elsewhere. So when I work with Brother Jimmy, is it? Okay. When I work, I don't want to get it wrong. I've been working with him. I kind of got kind of on the back burner when I, when I switched kind of roles. But that should be coming up. I don't want to say a date, but I, if they're too full and can't accept Rome, we will do it here as well. I will teach it as many times to as many people to get that information to them. Yeah, I enjoy that as well.
All right. Okay. Yeah. Okay. The second on that was me and? Me, him. Okay. 627, convene into executive session. Do I need to read the whole thing or just the segment we're going to talk about? Gee, section 551.071, consultation with attorney, pending or contemplated litigation settlement offer or to seek advice from attorney. And this will be consultation with attorney, Newark ETJ, CCN, and Farm to Market 4668. It's actually 628. Okay. All right. Let's go to the clause. So it's 4628? Oh, it is? Okay. Oh, it said FM on there.
For the record, we're going into executive session on a situation regarding County Road 4668. It was a misprint. I made a mistake on that. It's County Road 4668.
This conference will now be recorded.
Oh, no. There I am. Okay, it is, just a second, I'll tell you what time it is. 6:44, we're back in session. There not going to be any action from the executive session. 6:44. 6:44, that we're out of executive session. And then we're going to go on to future agenda items. Anybody? Okay, I do have a future agenda item. I would like to see about an ADA compliant handicap accessible swing chair for one of the, we've got just regular swing chairs and a couple of infant swing chairs over at the public park. I wanted to see if we could not get the chair that would make it accessible for a handicapped child, please. If we'll put that on the next agenda. And I think that's it. Motion to adjourn. Second? And all in favor?
Aye.
Was that an aye for Michelle? Okay. All right, that's a wrap. 6:44, 45. We're over.